Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Monday, May 9th, 2022. It is approximately 6:01, I'm going to call this meeting to order. On March 3rd, 2022, the County of Los Angeles moved into the low-risk category according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Community Level Designation. On March 4th, 2022, an updated county Department of Public Health Officer order went into effect, which among other things, removed the requirement to wear masks indoors. On April 12th, 2022, the Burbank City Council moved to return in-person public meeting beginning on May 3rd, 2022. Consistent with council action, the Planning Board has also moved to return in-person public meeting beginning on May 9th, 2022. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during the oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the Planning Board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the public comment period. If you'd like to participate in public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by phone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Let's start off this evening with an invocation. If you'd please stand and by Mr. Attakunian, and I'll lead us in the flag salute.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here in person and welcoming the newest member of the board. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and exhibit kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city, and please help us accomplish our goals. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Can we get the roll call, please?
Board Member Attakunian.
Present.
Board Member Monaco.
Present.
Board Member Elric.
Present.
Vice Chair Rosati.
I am here.
Board Member Heiner. Let the record show Board Member Heiner is absent.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
On tonight's agenda, we have one public meeting. Item number one, now is the time and place for hearing on project number 22-0002020 for a request to recommend city council approve a zone text amendment for proposed updates to fees, standards, definitions pertaining to community facility fees as noted in Title 10, zoning regulations, Chapter 1 zoning, Article 22, community facility fees of the Burbank Municipal Code in order to accommodate a comprehensive update to the city's development impact fee program. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest?
No.
No.
Have any planning board members had, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No.
Monaco?
I said, I'm sorry, no.
Okay. And I said, no. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person regarding this topic?
No.
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 Vice Chair, just for clarity, and this is not, Board Member Elric did submit questions this morning via email. We prepared responses, and we'll give those responses to the board during the presentation.
Got it. And Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Other than those submitted by Board Member Elric this morning, which we'll respond to during their presentation, no other comments have been submitted.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Vice Chair Rosati and members of the Planning Board. My name is Beverly Ibarra, Senior Administrative Analyst in the Community Development Department. Scott, can we pull up the presentation? Oh, thank you.
Please pull up the presentation for staff.
Thank you. Tonight, you are being asked to consider a zone text amendment to update the city's development impact fee program, otherwise referred to as DIF, by amending Title 10, Chapter 1, Article 22 of the Burbank Municipal Code pertaining to community facilities fees. Tonight's presentation will include a brief introduction to development impact fees, information about the impact fee update and nexus study, the city's policy considerations for updating DIFs, the proposed DIF updates, a fee comparison to our neighboring cities, and a summary and next steps. First, I would like to provide a brief introduction to development impact fees. Mitigation Fee Act under the California Government Code gives cities the authority to implement DIFs and provide requirements and regulations to DIF programs. In order to impose impact fees, the city must adopt a nexus study to show that a reasonable connection or nexus exists between the impacts caused by new development and the capital improvements needed to address those impacts. Additionally, the DIF charged to each project must be proportional to that project's share of the impact. DIF revenue collected can only be used to address needs from new development, not to address existing deficiencies. Additionally, revenue collected under impact fees can only be used for capital and infrastructure, specifically identified in the nexus study, and maintenance and operations cannot be paid with impact fees. It is important to note that DIFs alone cannot finance all of the city's infrastructure needs. Although the city's fees were established in the 90s, the city increases the fee each year based on a construction cost adjustment factor, similar to CPI. The city currently charges the community facility, DIF, for police, fire, library, and parks on all development, and the transportation, DIF, is only charged on non-residential development. And these fees have been used to pay for projects such as the police-fire headquarters, library equipment, park facilities, and several transportation improvements and projects. We are proposing an updated DIF program because the city's current DIFs are based on studies completed in the 1990s. Since that time, several projects identified in the original study have been built or evolved, and impacts and development patterns have changed. Therefore, a new nexus study is needed to support fees that pay for new infrastructure. Plus, we have newer growth and development assumptions from the Burbank 2035 General Plan. The city hired a consultant, Economic and Planning Systems, otherwise known as EPS, with support from fear and peers for the transportation analysis, to conduct a nexus study and update the city's DIF program. The nexus study provides the necessary technical documentation to support a DIF program update pursuant to state law. Any updates and changes to the DIF requires amending Title 10, Chapter 1, Article 22 of the Municipal Code. We held a city council study session in February 2020 to provide general information on impact fees and to provide an update on the status of the nexus study. In last December, staff provided city council with additional requested information and to receive policy direction and input on the city's DIF fee program update. In this past April, we held a virtual citywide community meeting to discuss a proposed update to the fee program. The meeting included an overview of DIF, discussion on the recommendations contained in this report, answered any questions, and noted any public comments. As mentioned earlier, the current DIFs are based on the original study with projects forecasted in the 1990s, so several projects have been built or evolved, and this update will allow us to charge a fee to fund an up-to-date list of anticipated infrastructure. The updated DIF is proposing to add in information technology fee. Additionally, the current fee does not charge the transportation fee on residential projects, and this would change with the proposed DIF program. The proposed changes will also consolidate some categories in the fee structure, so the way we charge it is a little easier to implement, and adds a unique fee for hotel uses, which we currently charge as commercial use. And the state recently updated the impact fee law with AB 602, so this is also an opportunity for us to modify the ordinance and include new reporting and update requirements. State law is specific on the process and analysis that must be conducted to update DIFs. The methodology used provides a necessary technical analysis to support a DIF fee and program update. In general, each fee category use the following steps to calculate the nexus supported maximum fee amounts. First, staff and the consultant refer to the Burbank 2035 General Plan, which is a blueprint for the future development of the city, to estimate existing and future population and employment. Second, staff provided a list of their department's new capital improvements needed to serve both existing and future residents and employees during the general plan horizon year of 2035, based on city council and various boards and commission priorities and other goals and policies of the general plan. Then staff and the consultant developed cost estimates for the projected capital needs. And fourth, the consultants allocated the costs between existing and new development to determine the DIF's share. Fifth, consultants distributed the costs further among different residential and non-residential uses, including retail, industrial, and the other land uses. And sixth, the consultants calculated the cost per unit of development. This calculation provides the maximum fee per square foot or unit that can be justified by the nexus study. And finally, the city added a 5% administrative fee, which reflects the cost of administering the DIF program. Projects in the updated infrastructure needs list, as identified in step 2 of the methodology, include park facilities, library materials and technology, police vehicles and equipment, and fire vehicles and station facilities. Transportation improvements include transit, complete streets, and roadway improvements. Some examples are bus services, new bikeways, and pedestrian safety improvements. The new DIF also proposes to add in information technology, or IT, fee, under community facilities to account for the need to expand the city's IT infrastructure. All these new facilities projects are needed to accommodate growth and maintain public service standards, and is what the fee is based on. These are also what the fees will be limited to funding. As discussed earlier, the nexus study calculates the maximum fee levels that can be justified, based on total infrastructure needs and its expected cost divided by the expected development growth in units and square footage. The highest maximum fees do not mean we necessarily have to use them or that they are the best fees. The updated maximum fees calculated by the new nexus study are in some cases significantly higher than the current fees. For these land uses, imposing the maximum fees would conflict with other city goals and policies. This slide shows the residential maximum fees on a per-unit basis, highlighted in green, compared with the current fees. The maximum fee is over three to four times the current fee. And here are the non-residential maximum fees on a square foot and per-room basis, highlighted in green. To put it into perspective, this table also shows a comparison of the maximum fees to the current fees. The new maximum fees are higher by half to over two times what we currently charge. At the study session in February 2020, staff recommended that city council consider three policy criteria to keep in mind when considering changes to the DIF program. First, align fee levels with the city's larger goals, such as facilitating housing production and ensuring that new fees are consistent with city fiscal policies and maintain the city's market competitiveness for new growth within the region. Second, balance fees with building neighborhoods. DIFs mitigate the impacts of new development and fund needed public facilities and infrastructure. However, other tools, such as planned developments, also allow the city to request infrastructure from new development and build neighborhoods, while ensuring that new development of all types pay its fair share of infrastructure costs. And third, facilitate community benefits that build neighborhoods, such as affordable housing and public amenities, while not adversely impacting the financial feasibility of a project or result in the loss of future growth opportunities. It is important to strike a balance between providing an appropriate level of facilities and infrastructure to new residents and businesses while avoiding excessive costs that could discourage development. Another policy guiding the proposed DIF update is the city's cost recovery policy, which gives us consistent guidelines in establishing city fees. Looking at the city's cost recovery policy pyramid, staff determined that DIFs fall under the important services category that provide individual and public benefit. It is an important service because it provides important infrastructure and gives the city the ability to provide for and sustain the added capacity. The infrastructure that these fees pay for do offer a public benefit, but since the fees are only covering the added capacity from new development, DIF revenue delivers a higher benefit to the user, or in this case, to the new development, than to the general taxpayer. Based on this pricing policy, DIF would fall under the 20% to 80% cost recovery level. Based on these policy considerations, staff recommends adopting DIF at 80% of the maximum allowable fees charged to new development. Staff also recommends three exceptions to this 80% level for certain types of development that provide other public benefits. For affordable housing units, staff recommends the city impose a charge on affordable housing units in extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income categories at 50% of the maximum fee level rather than 80%. This is because the city gains additional public benefit when developers build affordable housing units in the city. For retail units, for retail uses, staff recommends the city impose DIFs on retail development at a level of 33% of the maximum fee level. The maximum fee attributable to retail development is relatively high compared to other fee categories, primarily due to the transportation impacts. However, retail uses provide recurring annual general fund revenue in the form of sales tax above and beyond the one-time fees provided by DIFs. Because of this recurring revenue, staff recommends the DIF fee be charged at a lower rate to balance the need to mitigate impacts with a desire for the city to continue to attract retail uses. For hotel and lodging use, staff recommends the city impose DIFs on hotel developments at a level of 67% of the maximum fee level. Like retail uses, hotel uses provide recurring annual general fund revenue in the form of transient occupancy tax in addition to one-time DIFs. Hotels also support the city's larger employer, as well as attract tourists to stay in Burbank and pre-tranize other businesses. Setting this lower DIF will keep the city competitive in attracting new hotel uses. Therefore, staff recommends the proposed fee levels shown on this slide, which generally shows the proposed fees at 80% of the maximum fee levels. In other words, DIF would be paying 80% of the total costs attributable to new development for market-rate residential, office, studio, and warehouse industrial uses. Affordable housing units, retail, and lodging hotel uses have slightly lower fee levels for the reasons explained earlier. When comparing the proposed fees to the current fees, residential fees increased significantly due to applying transportation to the total DIF. This would be the first time we charged residential development the transportation impact fee. The other land use category fees increased between one and three times more than the current fees. It should be noted that included in these fee amounts is a 5% administrative fee factored in to cover the cost to administer the fee program. And here are the proposed DIF fees on market rate versus affordable units. This is charging 50% of the maximum fee level on affordable units compared to charging market rate units 80% of the maximum fee. In a mixed affordable and market rate project, the regular fee would be imposed on the market rate units at 80% of the max, and the 50% rate would apply to the affordable units. When considering the appropriate DIF levels, the city may consider how existing and future fee levels charged in Burbank compared to those of the city's neighbors. The table shown here shows the proposed Burbank DIF along with Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena's current fees. While Glendale and Pasadena charge DIFs on different land use types and collects funds for different infrastructure needs, a direct one-to-one comparison is not possible. But a comparison can be informative in showing how Burbank's current fees and new maximum fees are relative to our neighbors. Compared to those of the city's neighbors, the proposed residential fees will still be lower than Glendale and Pasadena. Both Glendale and Pasadena collect DIF primarily for acquiring new park land. Glendale also collects for library improvements. And these DIF fees are higher than Burbank's DIFs because Glendale and Pasadena include the cost of land acquisition for new parks in their impact fee levels. Burbank also collects park DIFs, but has chosen to add park capacity by making improvements to existing parks rather than buying and clearing property for new parks. Additionally, through other methods, such as the planned development and development agreement process, Burbank encourages large-scale projects to include park space in their developments at the cost of the developer. On the other hand, Burbank's proposed non-residential DIF fees will be higher than Glendale and Pasadena's. Burbank collects DIFs for a wider variety of community facility infrastructure than either cities. Only Burbank's comprehensive DIF fee program charges impact fees for police, fire, and IT improvements. Currently, Glendale exempts hotel use from DIF, and Pasadena charges hotels the multifamily transportation impact fee only. It is important to note that there will be constant opportunities to reevaluate the DIF program after the fee is updated. Annually, the fee is adjusted based on the construction cost inflation factor. Additionally, updated DIF law under AB 602 requires cities to update their studies at least every eight years. Staff will also be recommending that the nexus study be updated sooner upon completion of the three specific plans currently under development, including Golden State Specific Plan, Downtown TOD Plan, and Media District Specific Plan. This will give the city the opportunity to reevaluate the DIF charged and determine whether there are nexus reasons or policy reasons to adjust the DIF more periodically and assess if there are new improvements required from new development. As mentioned earlier, there were two city council meetings held to provide information to this council about the DIF update and nexus study progress. A citywide virtual community meeting was also held in April of this year. Additionally, direct communication was sent out to interested parties, and a notice was published in the newspaper and sent through the city's e-notify. All projects are subject to CEQA, and this project is exempt under CEQA Guideline Section 15378B4, which excludes items involving the general creation of governmental funding mechanisms or fiscal activities. Under this guideline, this item does not constitute a project. Additionally, if it was a project, it would be covered by the common sense exemption under Section 15061B3, since the project would not allow any new uses and would not change the amount of physical development that is currently allowed pursuant to the city's zoning The DIF update is consistent with the Burbank 2035 General Plan and implements significant policies under the land use and mobility elements. Land use element policy number 2.3 requires that new development pays its fair share of infrastructure improvements and ensure that needed infrastructure and services are available prior to or at project completion. The mobility element, goal number one under balance, notes that Burbank's transportation system ensures economic vitality while preserving neighborhood character. And the DIF update is an implementation included in the plan realization to review and update the transportation and community facilities fee program to ensure that transportation projects are adequately funded and fees are adequately addressing impacts on city services caused by new development. Based on the analysis provided tonight and in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Board adopt the resolution attached to the staff report as Exhibit A. For the update to the city's development impact fee program, staff proposes the ordinance included as Exhibit B, which includes the following. Adding an information technology fee. Implement a specific fee for lodging use. Adopt the capital improvement plan presented in Appendix B of the nexus study report. Apply city council cost recovery policies and general plan goals to the nexus study maximum fee levels. Provide a fee reduction for affordable housing by setting the rates for community facilities and transportation fees for qualifying deed-restricted affordable housing units at 50% of the rates applicable to other housing units. And provide a fee reduction for retail and lodging uses, which both generate recurring revenues to the city in addition to one-time DIFs. The proposed updates consider all of the variables presented in this report in order to strike a balance between generating important revenue for needed infrastructure while at the same time supporting other city goals required to build and protect neighborhoods. The next steps include city council consideration of the board's recommendation on the zone text amendment and the proposed draft ordinance at a notice public hearing on June 7th and 21st, updating the city's DIF program. If adopted, the fees will go into effect 60 days after, on August 6th, 2022. This concludes tonight's presentation. I, along with Assistant Community Development Directors David Krisky and Fred Ramirez, are available to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. We will now open up the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff. If you wish to speak, for members of the public that wish to comment by phone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Board. Callers will be placed in the queue until all persons' comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of minutes for the first few callers to get in Any callers yet?
At the moment, no, but it will allow two minutes for them to come through.
Okay.
There are no callers in the queue.
No callers? Hmm. No callers? No? Okay. This is a hot topic for some people in the community. I'm surprised. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Vice Chair, if, as I mentioned earlier, Board Member Elric had submitted some questions, and I was hoping if we could maybe note the question and then maybe a response for each one of them. I think it would benefit the whole board to hear both of those.
Great. Why don't we have that? And these are going to be the additional comments, right?
Yeah, so we have a caller, so we just got one.
Oh. Well, let's do it.
So Vice Chair, if we just officially reopen the public comment period?
Yes, sir.
You close it. I have Simon Howell on the line. Simon Howell, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for taking my call. That's weird. Hold on a second. There you go. Yeah, it's better. Thanks for taking up this issue, and it's been a big popular issue for a long time. And you forgive me if you covered this, I caught the end part of the presentation, and I just spun out about it, perused the packet that came out. But is it legal or is it possible? I didn't see money for schools in there, and it's really, again, it's possible, I missed it. And then I had a question about, for instance, the police. There's a difference in price between multi-unit and single-family, but to me, it would seem it's almost like it should be identical, like the use of police force is the same based sort of on, maybe on number of total people and not necessarily what kind of unit it is. So I don't know if something like that could be addressed. And I know that in that public meeting, we talked about the difference between these kind of fees and what our city labor charges for reviewing plans and that sort of thing. I think some part of this, that could be part of the discussion. I know it's not the same fee, but one of the ways I thought it wasn't right, and I know other people didn't as well, where we sort of have untracked hours in some of the labor associated with this in terms of people having multiple rounds of plan checks and that sort of thing, slows the process down, but also if money comes out of the general fund to- fund to go to private contractors, that's done by the hour, but internal processing is not done by the hour, and so there creates a situation where it could be that people who aren't building anything are helping to subsidize people's building projects. But again, I'm glad to see the increase, and I hope it's like an ongoing process because I don't think we can get money from projects the way we used to with the way the state has control of that now. All right, thanks for taking the call, and thanks for your time. Bye-bye.
Any other callers?
There are no more callers.
Well, let's give it one, a minute, and then we'll close the public comment period. No other callers? Okay. So I will declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like any further comments? Mike?
Hello. Okay. To answer Mr. Hamel's questions, the school district establishes their own fees. It's a separate, it's regulated under a separate law, so they, yeah, our impact fees do not include the, any school fees. Secondly, multifamily and single-family, the main difference, if you look at the fee table, the main difference are the transportation fees, and that's because multifamily, single-family, the trips generated from single-family typically are much higher than multifamily, and that's why those fees are higher. Single-family rates are higher than the multifamily rate. And then finally, plan review fees are not covered under impact fees. Impact fees are only covering capital costs and infrastructure from new development. So plan review fees would be a separate fee that would be calculated with either the city fee study or some other fee plan.
Great. And then I think Board Member Elrick had emailed some questions in, so why don't we review those questions?
Yes, I'll go through them one by one. Okay? Thanks. So the first question is, aside from inflation, how are fees raised? And discretion, it's, under whose discretion the fees are raised? So other than adjustments for inflation, adjustments to DIFs are made by updating the DIF program, updating the DIF program through the process that the city is currently undertaking. This includes establishing the city's growth forecast identified in the general plan, identifying necessary infrastructure needed to support that growth, and preparing a NEXUS study to establish updated fees and show that a reasonable connection or nexus exists between the impacts caused by new development and the capital improvements needed to address those impacts. And the city's council has the sole discretion to adjust these fees, provided that it is supported by the NEXUS study. The second question was, under Exhibit C, which was the NEXUS study, park facility capital needs and cost estimates, how was the list for new facilities put together? So each department evaluated their needs and new facilities planned through 2035. So for park facility capital needs, the Park Recreation and Community Services Department identified necessary capital infrastructure necessary to address park and recreation needs needed to support new development, primarily to new residents expected to live in Burbank. And they also based their list on council and park board priorities and their unfunded needs list. And the next question is, how old is this NEXUS study? So this current, the current DIF fees are based on, as you mentioned earlier, the NEXUS study from 1993, and the NEXUS study prepared for the DIF fee update being presented tonight is up to date and is finalized this year. The next question, for example, horse park in the Rancho Equestrian District and new parks in the Golden State District. Maybe I didn't include the whole question, but are these?
The question is, has there been conversation of new potential capital projects in the last few months that have been added to this NEXUS, that can be added to this NEXUS study? For example, a horse park in the Rancho Equestrian District, new parks in the Golden State District, as well as maybe horse trails?
Anything, okay. Well, several of the capital projects are general in nature. For example, new facilities listed under parks needs are, you know, dog park, community garden, pocket park, or soccer fields. So it could be part of the new potential capital projects in these areas. But specifically, a horse park is currently not included in the infrastructure list. But as we discussed, while the city council plans to consider updating the DIF program this year, staff is recommending that the city council may wish to consider a subsequent update upon adoption of the three specific plans currently under development if those specific plans identify additional needed infrastructure to support those plans.
Thank you.
And then the next question was, how often will the NEXUS study be updated to reflect unexpected growth or change? Three to five years? Well, the new state law, as we mentioned, requires an updated NEXUS study every eight years, so at least every eight years. And staff will be recommending that the NEXUS study be updated sooner upon completion of the specific plans, as we had mentioned earlier. And what the other question, next question was, what is the average inflation rate construction cost? Is there a cap on how far fees can climb per year based on inflation rate? In the past few years, inflation rates for construction costs have been approximately between 2% to 4%. It's been anomaly this year, it was around 16%, and right now, there is no inflation cap, but who's to say that the state might not implement something later in the future? But currently, there is no inflation cap. And then finally, the last question was, how are discounts being applied to affordable housing? Is the entire project receiving the discount or just the units set for affordable housing? And as we had mentioned earlier, staff is recommending the city impose a lower DIF level on each affordable unit that is deed-restricted. So if it's in a mixed affordable and market rate project, the regular fee would be, the 80% fee would be imposed on market rate units, and the 50% lower fee would be imposed on affordable housing units.
Just the units themselves?
Just, yes, just affordable units.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does the planning board have any questions for staff? Mr. Attacanian?
Just a quick question, perhaps I missed it, but I just want a definition of the term new, well, it's not a term, but it's used, new development. What's meant by new development?
So new development would be the added square footage. So if you have an existing building, it'd be any added gross area added onto the project. So the, what's already there would not count, would not be charged the impact fee.
So remodel would fall under new development? I just wanted clarification that any new development doesn't necessarily mean from ground up. It just means any additional square footage added?
Yes, so they would get a credit for the demolished area, but any added square footage. But this, for residential units, though, it is based on housing units. So if they, if you're building on a site that already had one unit and you're placing it with another one unit, then there is no net increase in units.
Even if the square footage is different?
Yes.
I see. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions for Mr. Monaco?
Hi. There's just a few questions here. When you said that, I was a little surprised. You said the multifamily does not create as much traffic as a single-family? Is that unit per unit, or is that unit, oh, so it's unit by unit?
Yes, it's charged per unit.
So in other words, if I build a 15-unit multifamily project, isn't that going to be generating more tra, more traffic than? I guess I don't understand how that, how that number came up. I guess, I look at a multifamily project, you can't break it up into individual units. It's a 15-unit project that's going to generate a tremendous amount of traffic in one place versus a single-family house that, am I making myself?
Yes, Board Member Monaco, David Kriski, Assistant Community Development Director. So on a per capita basis, it's lower. So if you look at one multifamily unit in isolation and one single-family unit in isolation, the trips generated per capita on the single-family is higher. Obviously, if you have 15 multifamily units, the per capita for each is lower, but when you take them together, as you stated, that overall project's going to have a higher demand on the transportation network, and that project together obviously would pay more on the project than a single-family house. But the reason the single-family amount on the individual unit is higher is because if you take a unit-by-unit comparison, traditionally, transportation trips generated by a single-family house are more on a per capita basis than that single, or single multifamily unit.
Thank you. Because again, in my thinking, the maximum fees that are being charged right now, that is per project? Or, for instance, I'm thinking about the Fries?
That's on square footage.
It's on square footage. So it's a maximum on per square footage? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand this. So that the maximum fee, maximum allowable fee per project is based on?
So for residential projects, the fees are assessed on a per-unit basis. So for the Fries site, 800-plus units, we take that current fee amount per unit, the 2,300, 2,500, but you multiply by 800 to get the residential portion of the community facilities. One big thing to think about, as Ms. Ibarra mentioned earlier, transportation fees are not currently charged on residential projects. So the transportation portion, there was no transportation impact fee charged on Fries, only the commercial portion was charged the fees. That is one big change that we are proposing to make with this updated program, is to charge residential projects transportation impact fees.
And the, go ahead, Ms. Monaco.
I'm just saying, thank you for that, it makes sense for me. And just the final, again, just for clarification, when you have the maximum fee, and right now, you're suggesting we go with 80% of that maximum, what would change that to go to the maximum fee? Am I, again, clear on that? Okay, who would make that decision and how would that impact?
So that's a policy, that's a policy decision of ultimately the city council. So what the, what the NEXUS study prepared was the maximum level of fee that we can charge that's justifiable by the methodology and the law. The city council may choose any level within that, with that range up to the maximum. For the reasons we stated, we think we should back off from that maximum, either by 20% generally or even further on other fees, but the city council could decide to do something different and could impose a fee within that range.
Flexibility is always good. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Eldor, go ahead.
I was reading, and I think I read in here that ADUs are not charged development impact fees? Is that correct?
Yes, under state law, any ADU under 750 feet, square feet, is exempt from DIF fees.
Per state law, okay. And then how did you guys come up with hotels' square footage per room instead of charging the square footage of the entire hotel?
Right now, yeah, it's based on the square footage. We, we base the, the comparison based off the hotel room being 500, about 500 square feet, and then...
If I may?
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait. I'm sorry.
Let Mr. Elrick answer, get his answer question, then if you want to ask a question, then we'll...
Yeah, it is a little bit of a bookkeeping thing and also a little bit of, at least on the transportation side, how some of the studies and some of the analysis that we do for other transportation review, the, kind of the variable that we look at is the room, and so we think charging per room, because room is kind of the ultimate thing that drives activity, transportation activity on a hotel, is the room. We were using square footage, which is a more coarser measure of impact, and so we're proposing to make the change to per room instead of square foot. What we had to do to kind of give you and the council a kind of an idea of what's the before versus after is we had to kind of convert our square footage rate to a unit rate just for illustrative purposes. We kind of took a 500 per square foot conversion. That's not necessarily to say the hotel room's 500 square feet, but it's kind of the overall, when you look at square footage of a whole hotel versus the number of rooms, that's kind of where we landed. It doesn't mean anything from the assessment of the fee, it's just a way to try and do an apples-to-apples comparison of what we're currently charging versus what we're proposing to change. You could use, you could continue to use a square foot assessment if you wanted, but we felt it was cleaner to make the shift to rooms, similar to what we do for residential.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on that. Having a banking history and having done loans to hotels, we don't do by square footage, it's RevPAR. That's the generating, it's not, you're not doing it by square foot.
So a few questions. So just to piggyback on the hotel example, so if you did the hotel by rooms, but if there was a restaurant, that would be calculated by square foot, or that would not be calculated at all?
So generally, I would say it'd be included in the overall per-room calculation if the amenity, like the restaurant, was something that was kind of incidental or included in a typical hotel. So when we do the calculations for hotels and generating the trips and what ITE, for instance, generates trips by room, it's looking at the aggregate of the hotel, so it's looking at the employees, the guests, and the traffic to the incidental uses. So we would not charge it out separately. However, if the hotel, on a, kind of project-by-project basis, if the hotel had a separate intense use that was kind of, could operate on its own and could kind of derive its own traffic or activity, we might split it out if it was, if it made sense, but generally, it would be included.
Okay. And then can we pull up this, can you bottom-line this for me? Can we pull up the slide on the residential, what we, what the current DIF is now and what it will be at the 80% level? Because staff is recommending 80% across the board, right? And if you don't have it, just call it out, and I just want to mark it down. Is it, is it D98? So right now, we're at 3,060, and you're proposing to bring it to 13,000?
Yes, at the 80%.
I'll be honest with you, when I saw this, my eyebrows went up. I nearly spit out my water when I was reading this. I mean, that is a huge increase. Was there any discussion about, like a long-term homeowner versus a flipper where someone's doing it for business purposes where they can calculate this in versus someone that is buying the house to live there and contribute to the community? Was there any that kind of discussion?
So that's a good question, and again, it is a policy decision that ultimately is made. The council could carve out circumstances like that. I want to remind you too, though, because a lot of folks have gone and looked at that fee, particularly on the single-family side, and looked and thought to themselves, oh, that's another fee on the bottom line of a single-family person doing something with their home. Keep in mind, DIFs rarely applies to single-family, because even if you're knocking the house down and building it with another one, it's a net zero, so you're not charged. So just to clarify that or to underline that, where you would be charged is you somehow had a single-family house, but say you were on an R2 or an R3 and you were building another unit. That net new unit, yes, would be charged a multi, a new multifamily unit rate because you were now two units on one parcel. But if you're, if you're buying a 900-square-foot Burbank house, knocking it down and building a 2,000 or 3,000-square-foot house for the purposes of DIF, you're not charged those fees. So just to...
Yeah. And Vice Chair, I'd say, the example being like a small-out subdivision, if we were subdividing property, creating new units, we would be charging that to the brand-new units, which are factored into the cost.
Got it.
So someone buying it. But, but if you're taking your house, tearing it down and building it back up, that wouldn't occur. Now, for SB 9, we have a second primary unit that could be built right under SB 9, that would be a new unit on top of the existing one. That new unit could be charged a fee.
Yeah, SB 9 is more than one, more than one.
But for that one unit, the other ones are ADUs, they're exempt.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got that straight. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I now declare the hearing closed, and the planning board will deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? What is the planning board's pleasure?
I can go first. I, I thank you for the presentation, and, and I think this is something that overdue, I, I would say, considering factors, inflation, and the cost of labor and so forth and so on. I mean, the, the city, any municipality, regardless whether it's a city, it is, is a business, would need to revise and revisit these type of fees in order to support the infrastructure. And it's important that we have looked into this. And, and I think I was, Vice Chair Rosati alluded to it, and, and that was one of my concerns, where a single family would absorb this type of a transportation fee, which is tremendous. I mean, I can understand where developers would be able to work that into their financing or equations in calculations and so forth and so on, whether it be retail, multifamily, industrial and so forth. But for a single family to absorb that transportation, but the clarification, I think, was needed. And, and thank you for that, too. And I would be able to make and support the recommendation. And I think fees or anything, any change of, that, that goes into effect, I think visiting it in a shorter period of time rather than a longer period of time is, is helpful, not only to the, to the policymakers, but it's also helpful where the residents would be able to chime in at a certain time where this entire structure is not frozen in time for a number of years. So that some additional deliberation may be necessary, other factors that come into play as time changes. So if, if there is a thought process that, that we're going to be visiting this anytime soon, I would suggest maybe visiting it every four years, perhaps, in just the next four years, or sooner, or earlier, I should say, so that there's data that could be analyzed and looked into and see how this new structure, fee structure, is serving the purpose, instead of waiting a longer period of time and, and then, you know, trying to deal with issues here and there. So based on that, I would be able to make the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Other board members? Mr. Alder?
I'd like to also say that's a great idea as well. I agree that it needs to be looked at, because when I asked what the inflation rate was, you said it's sixteen percent in the last year, whereas before it was three to four percent. And fees can get astronomically high if we don't revisit that at a sooner time. I also wanted to make a recommendation to council to also talk about putting in a horse park at the Equestrian District, new parks at the Golden State District.
I think at this time, we're only talking about DIF fees.
DIF fees, yeah, okay.
Those, that's not part of our scope tonight.
Okay, okay, and that's all I had then. Thank you.
Board Member Monaco, any thoughts?
One general question, I'd like to get a list of the various fees that get charged in development. Is that possible to get my hands on that?
Yes, we can do that for you. As a matter of fact, I think there is, there are examples, if you want one for multifamily and single family, in our housing element, that's on the city's website, we can refer you to that.
Okay. I'm going to concur with my board members, and if somebody wants to make the appropriate motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank, Exhibit A, recommending to the city council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Burbank, amending Title X, Chapter One, Article Twenty-two of the Burbank Municipal Code, Exhibit B, to update community facility fees for project number twenty-two dash zero 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 two zero two zero.
So we have a motion?
I'd like to second.
We have a second, is there any more discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's poll the board members.
Board Member Elric?
Aye.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Motion passes. Oral communications, now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the planning board on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present staff with the completed speaker card to the planning staff, and if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment, please call eight one eight two three eight three 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 five to address the planning board. Each caller will be placed in a queue. All in-person comments will have been received. The phone lines are open, please bear with us as we take a few minutes to get the first few callers through. Do we have any callers?
There are no callers in the queue.
All right, let's give it a couple of minutes. Okay, there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for reports from staff, do we have any reports?
No reports, Vice Chair.
Now is the time for approval of the minutes from April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, planning board members. Any questions or comments, or if we can have the appropriate motion?
A move that we accept the minutes?
Motion?
Second?
Second. Any deliberation? Please poll.
Board Member Elric?
Yes.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Board Member Attakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to put it on a future agenda. Do planning board members have anything to introduce? This would be the place to introduce your, your, your agenda item if you wanted to make a recommendation to the council.
I'd like to make a recommendation to council to update the NEXA study in order to put in a horse park in the Rancho Equestrian District, and also new parks in the Golden State District and trails.
So.
Duly noted.
It's noted, is this going to kill you, kill your staff?
No, just, part of our staff is, we're all one here, is transportation planning. David and Beverly are aware of the comment and will convey that to the council.
Maybe we get an update on, on current parks, what's coming down the pike for parks, and then some of the other items.
Yeah, the, the, as it comes to Golden State, I will say this for Board Member Elric and the rest of the board, you will be looking at the specific plan for Golden State.
Yeah.
And as part of that discussion, we, we can have a very robust discussion about new opportunities for new open space and parks there. Same thing with media districts, same thing with downtown.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for that. So now is the time for city planner comments, any comments from the city planner?
Just one, and, and that is, and I apologize, we, we didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting, but we wanted to welcome Board Member Michael Elric to the board. Thank you, we now have five, even though Board Member Heinrich was out today. We look forward to working with you, thank you for the input. I really want to recognize and appreciate the board member for submitting questions to us earlier on today that we could prepare. So we encourage all the board members when they have, I know you all are busy, but when you get an opportunity, if you send those our way, that might be helpful. And then thank you for staff, our colleagues here, Beverly and David, for coming and presenting tonight. They've worked on it, I've been here five years, and they've been working on an iteration of this in more ways than one over the last couple of years, and there's been changes and updates. So what you have in front of you is a culmination of a lot of hard work with the consultants. So thank you, guys, for presenting that, and echoing, echoing the board's comments that this is long overdue. We're going to be presenting, they're going to be presenting it to the council in the coming months.
Great, yeah, and it looked like it was very complex, so thank you for your hard work. We now adjourn to the next regular planning board meeting on Monday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, at six P M. This meeting will be held in person in the city chambers at two seven five East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or view the meeting online or on television. The public will be able to provide public comment in the following ways. In person, during the time and date of the meeting, or by the ecomments on the city's webpage, or by calling eight one eight two three eight three three, two three eight three 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 five. Thank you again for participating, and have a good evening.
Good night.